I would like to call the Tuesday, October 17th, 2023 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday. Mumgaard, Gaines, Glover, Fenslaw, Cluke, Stube, Ingberg.
We've got scouts from Troop 359, which is St. Columba Kill with us. I'm going to invite them up to lead us in the pledge. Gentlemen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got a special presentation tonight swearing in three new firefighters. And I think one of the unusual things is they all have papio ties. Chief Gottsch.
So Mayor, City Council, Department Heads, I just want to give you two reasons why I'm very glad to see these three new firefighters here today. Number one, it's not because we needed them because of the contract, or that they're three great employees, or that we're short within our organization. It's because now I have seniority on three people. I'm number 97, 98, 99, and 100. So cleaning the bathroom at Station One is done for me. Guess what? You guys are in charge. So number two is during their weeks of training, training's tough, hard, painful for my training officer. My training officer got knocked on the head, had a couple of staples put in. I gotta get these guys out into suppression because I'm running out of training staff. So anyway, I think they're ready for what is to come within their career. The last that I think was the neatest is I asked them one question. Why do you want to be a Papillion firefighter? Why Peter, Michael, Benjamin, do you want to be a Papillion firefighter? And their response was, here's Peter's. It's always been his goal, following in the footsteps of his dad, who was a volunteer here. Welcome back. Michael, this is where his roots are. He went to school here, born and raised, considers this job to be a blessing to him. Welcome back. And Ben, Ben's been here, but he's always wanted to be a Papillion firefighter because it's in his hometown. So it's kind of part of his life. I believe you have an uncle on the job, correct? So anyway, welcome to Papillion Fire. I thought I'd have each one just kind of introduce themselves. Ben, I'll start with you. So.
I am Ben Stravich. This is my wife Paige, and our son, I have my daughter Elijah.
Michael.
Well, I'm Mike Denny. This is my wife Bethany, my two daughters Charlotte, Clara, also my twins. I have my mother over here, one of my brothers, my grandfather, and my dad.
Awesome. And Pete.
I'm Peter Keponic. This is my wife Rachel, and my son Colton, and daughter Adeline. And then I have my son in the back there, Landon, who's sitting with my mom and my dad.
We're a family here. We want to support not only our members, but their spouses as well. So we are excited. Mayor, you do the oath of office.
I think you've all seen the oath. For people that are listening, it's very long, but it's dictated by the state. So raise your right hand. I state your name.
I solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
The Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies.
That I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
Allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of a firefighter.
Perform the duties of a firefighter.
According to law and the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor my member of.
Nor my member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state by force or violence.
Or of this state by force or violence.
And that during such time.
And during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And then Chief, do the penning. Let you comment on it?
Mayor, I have a favor.
That's all right. Come on up. Let people know what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So the badge pinning is kind of something of tradition within the fire service, where we see those closest to us being a part of that process. We see the spouses as supporting their loved ones within the fire service. So that badge pinning just kind of is kind of like wedding ceremony in a sense, but that they're part of their lives in their time here in the fire service. So anyway, it's an important part. So anyway. And I'll watch this one right here.[438.02][438.02](laughter).
Congratulations and welcome again. Thanks. Appreciate it. Thanks, Chief. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. And I also want to extend a congratulations and welcome to the firefighter family, but also the City of Papillion family. So really exciting day. So thank you. Fall cleanup days started yesterday, and they run through Sunday, the 22nd. And as always, it's 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM daily. And then the shredding services will be on Saturday only, and that's from 7:00 AM to noon. And then the annual Halloween Safe Night, which is hosted by the Recreation Department, the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council, and the Papillion La Vista South Key Club, will be on Thursday, October 26th, and that's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Papillion La Vista South. And then just a couple of sewer agency updates. The WFIya funding was approved by the agency and Sarpy County last week. That's a huge momentous occasion for the agency because it approved the funding to continue with the major Phase 1A of the project. The agency did agree to enter into an agreement with the county where there would be some provisions required if funding falls short of the anticipated revenues in order to avoid having the county levy step in for a backstop. In the end, there was some negotiating, but in the end, it was a fair agreement to all parties. And also with the agency, it is advertising for a sewer agency administrator. The agency is getting too large for one entity's administrator to hold those dual roles. So applications are due November 6th. So if you know anybody that has a public administration background and experience with the utility or management of a municipality or anything of that sort, please encourage them to apply. We do have a link on our Papillion website for that job. And then just an FYI, I'll be in Carney and Grand Island tomorrow through Friday for Leadership Nebraska. Mark will still be in town, but as always, I'm available by cell or email. I might just be a little late responding. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Cluke. Second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item D1, Ordinance 2013, an ordinance to change, to approve a change of zone from AG Agriculture to MU Mixed Use R4 Multi-Family Residential and RE Residential Estates for the property legally described as part of Tax Lot 7, Section 12, Township 13 North, Range 12 East to the 6:00 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southeast corner, 72nd Street and Capeport Road. The applicant is Gene Graves, Oakleaf Phases 2 through 5. Is there a Councilman to introduce?
No.
Introduced by Councilman Glover. Item F1, Ordinance 2005, an ordinance to amend Section 205-262 Maximum Permitted Sign Area of Article 37 Signs of Chapter 205 Zoning Regulations, having to do with the maximum permitted sign area in the Central Business District. The applicant is the City of Papillion. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2005?
No.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Fenslaw. Any council discussion? Mr. Sunday.
Whether the sign had to be for two different businesses, or could it just be one?
Mr. Gibbons, you want to clarify that? Good question. Thank you.
The proposed amendment is for multi-tenant minutes, so more than one tenant has to be in the space to qualify for this provision.
But the question is, would the more powerful tenants be able to have the huge sign and the other tenant not have one at all? That's my question.
In this situation, there would be, the way the code is written, is that multi-tenant bays would have the opportunity to do that, but we don't control whether one tenant would have power over another tenant in this situation.
Okay, so I'd like to offer an amendment. That would just stop that from happening. Basically, if there's two tenants and they want to use their full square footage, that it has to be 50/50.
Are you, I'm not questioning the amendment. I'm thinking of the intent, and is he comfortable with, once the motion is made and if it's voted on, implementing it? Is that a clear enough motion?
Yes and no. What if we have multiple tenants where we have three or four tenants in there, in the space? Would it be multiplied and divided by how many suites are in the building?
So are you thinking equal percentage or just representation?
I think equal percentage sounds great, yes. Equal, we could do equal percentage.
Okay, so the motion to amend is to clarify in a multi-tenant building that's using this provision, it needs to be an equal provision, equal.
Going to go up to the.
Maximum.
Increased maximum, it needs to be equitably divided.
We usually work equitable instead of equal.
Equitable instead of equal? Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be fine.
A little wiggle room, yes.
Yes.
Are you comfortable with the intent?
Yes.
And if everybody's comfortable with the intent, is there a second on the motion to amend?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion to amend. Mr. Mumgaard.
Well, I don't disagree with the intent and what he's thinking, but I look at the application of it and question, what if it's a building that has six or eight, 10 tenants in it? Do we end up with a sign that is just not usable, not readable, and as ugly as heck?
I would say in this situation, we're talking about the CBD district in the downtown overlay area. What we're looking at from square footage wise is anywhere from a 30-square-foot wide lot to up to about a 45 to 50-square-foot lot. I don't see a provision where we're going to have eight to nine, 10 tenants in one of these building spaces. So in the situation of having two, three, or four type of users, dividing that over the four would allow for signage that would be appropriate, it would be legible, and it's not going to be what we consider sign clutter. If this was an amendment that you were taking over the whole city, for instance, that would be an issue, and we would have to work through that. I do agree with you there.
Okay, I will accept your judgment. Thank you.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One would be is that we're not changing the size of the sign, we're just saying that the tenants would participate. So I guess I'm looking to my colleague over there from the standpoint of who makes that determination with regard to whether it's 60/40, or whether it's 50/50, or whether it's 33/33/33% as far as usage on that particular sign. So does the city become kind of the arbitrator with regard to those tenants?
I think when you use a word like equitable.
Okay.
Unless somebody's objecting, it's not going to be a problem. So if someone's objecting like the other tenant, then I think it needs to be looked into, right?
Yeah, then the city becomes kind of the arbitrator in that particular situation.
Mr. Glover.
So help me understand, if I own a building, and I want to put a big sign up, and then I rent out three other spaces, and I don't want those people that are leasing the building to have a sign as big as mine, I don't have that ability to do that?
In the situation that was, if we're going to be equitable distribution of that, if, for instance, we'll just use 100 square foot as the maximum sign budget that you were allowed, if you have three tenant spaces available, then you would do a third, a third, a third for those users in this situation.
Even if I'm the one that owns the building?
It's an opportunity, it is, yes. I mean, you would have that ability, but if the city is the one who's regulating it, we would do it equitable between the three users.
Mr. Sherwood, I think you had a comment.
Well, I would just add to that, and that's why I think the word equitable is appropriate. It gives us the ability to use some judgment. So if you have a building and you're occupying 90% of it, but you have 10% that you are leasing to it, to another business, I think that gives us discretion to say, okay, it makes sense for your sign to be larger than your tenant's sign.
That's what I'm getting at. I just think that somewhere, there's got to be some equity, and if three-quarters of the building's rented out to one person, and then the other four people rent out the rest of it, it doesn't make sense to me that everybody would have.
So the equitable in the motion to amend would give you the administrative discretion to address what Mr. Glover was bringing up?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how I would interpret it.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mumgaard.
Well, I want to add to that equity, because if you have a situation where, let's say you have four people in the building, and the owner says they have to split, everybody on the sign, everybody has to be on the sign, and they all have to split the cost of the sign, and one of them says, heck, no, I don't want to be on the sign, and I don't want to pay for it. I would assume that then you can use equitable judgment and allow that person to back off and not have to pay for something they don't want. Correct?
You're nodding, but can you put the comment on the record?
Mark, go ahead.
Mr. Gibbons.
Yes, what we're going to need to do is, in this situation, we'll have to put in a provision for the equitable distribution, and it's a plaintiff-director interpretation or administrative approval for that, yes.
I'll just ask, if you ever run into those kinds of situations, bring it back to the council, please.
And I think this is a good example, where we actually ran into a situation in the downtown area that was not allowed by code. We wanted to allow it because of what we want to create downtown, and that's why we have this amendment. So I do think to that point, as we learn how downtown's functioning, we are amending things to work in that manner. Mr. Sunday, do you have something else?
I was just going to make the point that we are actually, we have to, I guess, keep aware that we are increasing or doubling the amount of signage that each of these buildings gets, right? So that's my understanding, anyway. Maybe you can clarify better.
The doubling, so the maximum square footage does not change for the CBD district, so the maximum that any building could have is 200 square feet. It just, in the situation of a multi-tenant bay business, they can double their linear footage. So it's a little, so our signage calculation's done by linear footage of a property's width. In this situation, if you had a 30-square-foot property, instead of having 30 square feet, you would be able to double that tonight.
You could, but you don't have to.
You don't have to, no.
Right. Yes. And I think it's important to remember that. You don't have to.
No, absolutely.
You can keep it at the original limitation.
And you don't have to use your whole square footage if you never want to.
Any other discussion on the motion to amend? If not, please vote on the motion to amend.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. We're back to the original motion as amended. Any more discussion?
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. F2, Ordinance 2009, an ordinance to redefine ward boundaries due to annexation. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2009?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Cluke.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mumgaard. Any discussion on this? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. F2, Ordinance 2009, an ordinance to redefine ward boundaries due to annexation. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2009?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Cluke.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mumgaard. Any discussion on this? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F3, Resolution R230162, a resolution to approve revised policies for inclusion in the personnel manual. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230162? Motion by Councilman Fenslaw.
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F4, Ordinance 2011, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from LI Limited Industrial to LI PUD2 Limited Industrial with a specific planned unit development overlay for the property legally described as lots 1 and 2 Commerce Business Center Replat 8, generally located at 15350 Shepherd Street. The applicant's 88 Tactical. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2011? Motion by Councilman Sunday.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F5, Resolution R230165. It's a public hearing and a vote. It's related to the last item, a resolution to approve the 88 Tactical Planned Unit Development Agreement. It's a public hearing. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230165?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mumgaard. Mr. Mumgaard, council discussion.
I just want to point out that I am just extremely amazed at the expansion and changes that this development is undergoing, going from a basic little building, a basic building, to now a real entertainment complex. And I sat and looked at the plan, looked at the plan, and I thought, wow, after it gets finished up, give it a few years, and I'm going to be watching to see how this comes about, because it's going to be quite the entertainment complex.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F6, Ordinance 2012, an ordinance to authorize the operation of golf carts on city streets, submitted by Councilman Mumgaard. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2012? Motion by Councilman Mumgaard.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Fenslaw. Council discussion. Mr. Fenslaw.
I have a request.
Yes.
I had a constituent who wasn't able to be here two weeks ago. He's a teacher, and teacher-parent conferences were last time he met. So if it's okay, I'd like to call him up, ask him a few questions.
Absolutely. And just for any students that are here, typically, an ordinance, the public hearing is at one meeting, and then the debate and discussion is at a separate meeting. So at the last meeting with the debate, I do not reopen the public hearing, so the public doesn't necessarily come up, but council members absolutely are free to invite people up for questions. So absolutely, Mr. Fenslaw.
John, would you like to come up?
Welcome. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
John Bahonic, 1104 East Carey Street, Papillion, Nebraska.
Hey, John, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to, I know we've talked about this in the past, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to, what you feel, how you feel about the ordinance, how you would find it useful, and how you might use it if it's passed.
Okay. Well, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Yeah, I'm interested in passing this ordinance for the City of Papillion for a couple of reasons. One, so we just moved into the neighborhood not too long ago. I've been teaching up at our local neighborhood school, Hickory Hill, for 14 years now. So I've been in this neighborhood a long time, never lived in it, but now I have the opportunity to live in it. And one of the thoughts I had was, this would be a great chance for me to get to and from work. I live a half a mile away from work, taking slow backroads all the way, and it seems kind of silly sometimes, and I like to walk sometimes, too, ride my bike, but I also have a lot to carry every day. I have two daughters who go to school with me, and my son to come in a couple of years. It'd be a much easier way, more economically efficient way for us to get to school quicker. It's not one of those things where you have to start the truck up every single day just to get to school and haul all of your things. That would be my main use for it, was looking for a way to, again, just have transportation to my job every day. And I know that's a unique, maybe from what other people might have, too, but I think there's a lot of perks that can come with that. When I wasn't sure if this would work, I looked into a moped, and my wife wasn't too happy about hauling kids on a moped up to work, and I said, that's probably a good idea. But there's so many good things, you know, you can't go too fast. You know, right now, I can go faster in my truck on the way to work than I could in a golf cart. And so it's a low-profile opportunity, or a vehicle that I could get to and from work and take my kids. And that's just one of many different pros that I could go over, but that's how I would use the golf cart. And I think that there's a lot of really good uses that could come from it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you very much.
Glad you had a chance to come tonight, so thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much.
That answer your question?
It did, yes.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Mumgaard.
Well, I think all of you know how I feel about this, since I introduced you. I'll just simply make a bigger picture. My philosophy about government includes the idea that, you know, if government can help use their regulations to not just control activity, but to help somebody, one person, two persons, three persons, it doesn't make any difference what number. If you can do something that creates a regulation that helps somebody, you do it, because that's good government. And I think that defines what this ordinance is, and so I'm glad to offer it, and I'm glad to support it.
Mr. Glover.
I'm going to be honest with everyone. I had some real reservations about the safety of this ordinance. You know, we talk about, you know, the pandemic and everything that's happened over probably the last five years, and the driving, and the way people drive, the number of red lights that are blown through, the number of violations that happen on a daily basis. I have some reservations with golf carts going around the neighborhoods. And I, as I think about that, you know, I know that for the most part, the people that are asking to do this are going to be safe and obey the rules and the regulations that are set forth. What bothers me is the people that won't follow those rules and regulations, because you know, the gentleman that was here from Ralston, I don't know if it was the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago when they spoke about this. Afterwards, I went up to him, and I said, now, tell me the truth. You have to get a permit to drive your golf cart or something similar around the city. Are there a lot of people that abuse that and don't get a permit and drive anyway? And he said, yeah, all the time. And so I think about that, and I think about, you know, like I said earlier, everything that's gone on. I had some reservations. I, you know, when I look at golf carts and cars, and myself going down Centennial Road and having the kids from the high school pass me on the inside because I wasn't going fast enough, I think about, what would that have been like on a golf cart? You know? going fast enough, I think about, what would that have been like on a golf cart, you know? So anyway, that's my, that's my fears. The reality of it is, I'm gonna vote for this ordinance, because I'm, I want to give it a chance. But I do have reservations, and, and I hope that if it becomes a problem and we can't control who's got a golf cart and who's driving around in the age, because I'll guarantee you, we'll have plenty of kids bopping around on their mom and dad's golf carts that aren't 20 or 21, whatever the age that we're gonna put in this ordinance. And we'll have plenty of that going on. We just added another leg to the, to the work of the police department, and, and hopefully nobody gets injured seriously. But I, I'm gonna vote for it. I'm open-minded, I'm gonna give it a chance, but I do have some real reservations about it.
Any other counsel discussion? If not, please vote. Oh, Mr. Sunday.
I, I did. I wanted to share some of those same concerns. I, too, am supporting this tonight. But aside from what Councilman Glover said, I also fear it's gonna become an enforcement nightmare for the police here in our community. For instance, I don't think they have a right to just stop a golf cart to check, to make sure they're registered. I don't think, without probable cause, you, or reasonable suspicion, you can't pull someone over. So that right there creates a potential problem. So I'm gonna vote for it tonight and, and watch how it goes. And we may or may not be back here in a year or so, trying to, you know, overrule this thing, but, reverse it, but we'll see. I hope it works.
Thank you. Any other counsel discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. With that is the next item, F7, Resolution R230168, a resolution to approve an amendment to the master fee schedule to include a registration fee for golf cars. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230168? Motion by Mr. Glover, second by Mr. Mumgaard. Any proponents or opponents? Counsel discussion? Mr. Sunday.
Oh, no.
Okay. Any others? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. Committees, Public Works Committee met. Got a report from the, from that? I'm not sure who the chair is.
I got elected.
Mr. Stube, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah. So the committee made up of my colleagues to the left here, there were three of us this evening that met. And what we discussed was a study that was prepared by a consultant to assist the, the city with regard to the, kind of the park road that, that goes around Halleck Park. And so we talked about different options that were identified, the costs associated with those different options. The one that we preferred was an option to do full concrete with stormwater provisions included within that to address some of the water issues that occur in that particular location. So one of the questions that came up, that I brought up, was there are standards that the state requires you abide by. It is a park road, it's not considered public right of way, so I'd asked for maybe the consultant to go back and take a look at whether the width of the pavement could maybe be reduced, which has a potential tendency to slow traffic down, especially in that park. So that's something that the consultant, that we've asked for the consultant to, to take back and, and take a look at that. It's not something that's gonna occur right away from the standpoint of construction. I think it's proposed that the parking lot for Papio Bay be done first, the potential for this project to occur after that, so we're probably looking at 2025 for that work to take place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other committees met. Any comments from the floor? Welcome. If you pull the microphone down and then tell us your name, if you can, there you go.
My name is Zella Bowers. My address is 317 South Pork Street, Papillion. In my second grad social studies, we learned about city ordinances and laws. This got me thinking about a city ordinance I would like to see passed. I think we should move the night we trick-or-treat to the last Saturday of October. This would be a good idea for our community because many parents are off on Saturdays. Also, if it was on a Saturday, kids won't have to wake up for school the next morning, when kids should be getting ready for bed. Many are still at trick-or-treating, or they have to cut the night short to get to bed on time. There are already communities in Iowa that have moved their trick-or-treating night. In Bonnington, Iowa, the town members were surveyed, and 65% of the people wanted the night of trick-or-treating moved to the last Saturday of October. I have also talked to different people in our community, teachers at my school, friends of my grandma and grandpa, and my teachers' friend, and my parents' friends, or like, yeah. According to the national day calendar, the Halloween costume association found National Trick-or-Treat Day in 2019, which is on the last Saturday of the month. I know that it's too late to move the date for this year, but that gives time to communicate the day change for the future Halloweens. And some ways we could communicate the day change in Papillion is to put up signs and banners, put the information in the water bill, and maybe pass out flyers in the Papillion Days play. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don't, yeah, I think you gotta come back up, because somebody's gonna ask you a question. Mr. Mumgaard.
No, I, you can come back up. I'm gonna turn to your parents, and I would ask that, would you please, she was reading this very nice little comment, would you please leave that written-out speech, and so that we can make it part of the record? And then, secondly, I will ask staff to please publish that on the website, so that her thoughts have now been exposed to the entire city. So please leave your speech with us.
Wonderful job. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the floor? And if you do, you gotta beat that.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Man, I do have a comment.
Mr. Mumgaard.
Okay, I know this, I don't want to over, to bore you, but I'm gonna go back to golf cars. I just want to forewarn you. We got a message from somebody who was very much in, a man who was very much in favor of, of our ordinance for some problems that his son had, and this would help that son's problems. Problem is, he lives outside the city, just outside the city, but in an area that won't be annexed for several years. Well, I pointed out to him that the county has the same authority to do this as we do, and he then contacted his county commissioner and the county administrator with the suggestion that the county adopt a similar permission to use golf carts in the developed areas of the ETJ. I also contacted them, explained what we were doing, and, and also recommended that they should consider that the city limits is really not the way it needs to, not what needs to be the barrier here. We'll see. So if you get contacted by any Sarpy County officials asking you questions, I'm, I'm to blame. I sent the, I sent the man to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counsel comments? We got some high school students here. You gotta come up and tell us your name and what brought you here, and we will wait. Gotta come up.
Your name and why you're here.
Gotta, you gotta come up to the podium and tell us.
Actually.
Give us your name and what brought you here.
Okay, my name's Kendall Murphy. I'm in a government class, and the teachers wanted us to come in for like, a project that we're working on. I also find this golf cart situation very interesting, so yeah.
Welcome.
Good.
My name is Olivia Demont, and I go to Papillion La Vista South. And Mr. Keller made me come here, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Welcome. Any other counsel comments? Just the last couple of weeks, the youth council, and thank you for being here again, the youth council put on a Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. It was the second year in a row. A lot of people down at the First Street Plaza, so thank you for all of the work there for the youth council and what you're doing. We also had the agency board meeting. Ms. Powers updated on the major items there. United Cities met. I think the major thing with United Cities at this point is just, again, trying to see what legislation might be going in next year, and I don't know if we know, we're really hearing much yet. A lot of interim studies are being done. But again, just another reminder, if there are things you care about, you want us working on, make sure we're aware of that, and we can get that plugged into the United Cities or the League's Legislative Committee. Ms. Klug and I, this morning, attended a tree planting ceremony at Prairie Queen, pretty neat project. There is a new project across the state by the Honor and Remember Organization, which is the group that tries to honor fallen soldiers and fallen first responders. It's a national organization, has a Nebraska chapter, the chapter director actually lives in Papillion. And they, they are working on a project to plant 7,100 trees across Nebraska, and that represents one for every fallen veteran or first responder. And that's of all conflicts, civil war to current. And Papillion signed up to take 200 of those trees. And so that planning ceremony was this morning at Prairie Queen. That was grant-funded through the NRD. And then as part of the grant funds, they'll also maintain and water the trees for three years, so it's not taking staff resources. So now, as you go around Prairie Queen, that side, that path around there had been out in the sun. Now, that first part of it, you'll actually, in about 10 years, be walking through a grove of trees. Neat part of the project is every tree is dedicated to a specific individual. And next year, I think, or in the spring, there'll be some signage going up. So if somebody's looking for something, like maybe Simper or Naziska who were killed here, they can actually find, okay, go to group five, tree three, and that's the one dedicated to that individual. So we had, I don't know how many people would just estimate were out there.
Um.
Yeah, there was at least 100 people out there volunteering, planting trees. And it was a partnership between the NRD. There's a project called the American Reforestation Initiative. Papio Valley Nursery supplied the trees. Midlands Community Foundation provided some grant money. So a really good initiative, and that was this morning. So again, thanks for everybody that's been part of that. And then met with the Boy Scouts this afternoon, this evening. Just another reminder, the fall cleanup is going on now, seven to five each day. And if people ask about shredding, that'll be Saturday morning up until about noon. At the landing on Friday night, is that Friday Night Bites again, where the food trucks and some of the events are there. So that's Friday night at the landing. There is a ribbon-cutting Friday downtown at 1:00 in the, next to the old theater, between the theater and Jean's Auto. There's a new business going into the basement. It's a Papillion resident opening up a business. And then, again, just a reminder of the Halloween Safe Night at Papillion South that the youth council is involved in. And then, if you're interested in going to the Chambers Annual Awards, that's on the 9th. Let Robin know if you're interested in that. Any other counsel comments? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Klug. Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
We are.